It's 6:30, so I'd like to call to order the Village Board meeting of Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacobson.
Here.
Blackwood.
Yep.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Trendle.
Here.
Cracklow.
Here.
Briney.
Here.
All right. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Lisa, proof of posting. But before we go into proof of posting, I'd like to welcome the new board members on, Sharon Jacobson and Jennifer Trendle. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Yay!
And us old folks, we were kinda, we're not green anymore, I don't think. But Lisa, proof of posting, please.
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
All right. Well, thank you. And so, the agenda's changed a little bit since this is my first meeting, and I've been kinda sitting back on the sideline saying, you know, if I'm ever in that seat, I'd like to run it a certain way. But I also took some advice from other board members. So you'll notice on here, we have a public comment. That is the first part of the meeting, and that'll be for three minutes. But a lot of times, people get frustrated because as the meetings go on and on and on, they have a public comment. They want to make, you know, a comment after the fact. So we have two public comments on here. So I would just ask that you respect the board, and if you have a public comment, you're welcome to come up here and state what you have. If I could see a show of hands, who would like to make a public comment? All right. First go, a public comment, going once, going twice. All right. We're gonna move on to approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. We got Paula and Kristen. Any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? The minutes have been pretty thorough. I've tried to go through them. I go through them with my daughter, just try to get a little red ink on it, but no luck, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns? All right. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passed. Moving on to reports. Library Board meeting on April 9th, 2025. And Paula, you are still on the library board, so...
Well, I wa- yeah. Yeah. That was my last meeting on the library board.
Sad to say goodbye?
Yes, it was. But do you have the...
I think you might have some...
I do. I was just gonna look it up. Actually, why don't we have Jennifer go ahead and give the report?
Okay.
Sure. I'd be happy to. The library now has a safer communities oak box, which is for Narcan, in case there is an overdose. There is signage on the door. The library board was very pleased to be able to have that be part of our agenda and part of the community. The drive-up window has needed to be replaced for several years. We have the board approved, the library board approved, quote, from Vogel Brothers, and it's a two-to-three week timeline once they get started on that.
Any other quotes?
That was the only one. It came in under the amount.
And since Vogels are the people who built the library, we went to them first. And because we thought since they built the library, they'd be best, and they came under the price that would be needed for our fee.
So they're definitely familiar with it.
Yes.
Yep. And we have a special meeting tomorrow to review the employee handbook for the library, and the regular meeting for the library is scheduled for May 14th.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Jennifer or Paula? Nope? All right. We're moving on to number seven, Treasurer's Report, Bills, Discussion of Possible Action. Lucy?
So the first run of bills in the amount of $18,782.19, second run in the amount of $198,287.86, for a total of $217,070.05.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $217,070.05.
I'll second. All right. We got a motion and a second. Any, can you give us the...
Absolutely.
The top five?
So there's three that are over $5,000. The first one is Associated Bank, Green Bay. It's a loan. I did do my due diligence. If anybody would like, I had to go back because some of it was refinancing. So let's start with the series 2018. One is an annual payment. This was for Highway PQ. $235,000 of it was for sewer system projects, $895,000 for street improvement projects, which included Highway PQ, and one point, $1,075,000 was refunding, and so part of that refunding was refinancing a different bond. And then the other one was refinancing a bond from 2028, and I'd like to point out that, so for bank first, that's $17,344.27. That is the final payment for that one. So that's good news. And then the other over $5,000 is the monthly payment for LRS, the $9,384.84. Any questions on those?
Appreciate that. All right. Any other questions for Lisa or Lucy when it comes to finances? Roll call, please.
Trustee Blackwood.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trendle.
Yes.
Cracklow.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Briney.
Yes.
All right. Bills are paid. Moving on to new business, number eight.
I did have just a quick treasurer report.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Just three quick things. The bike trail review has been completed thanks to Paula's help. The Joint Bike Trail Committee owes the Village of Cambridge $32,358.44. After Paula went through, it was hard, because she was part of that, it was easier for her to make sense of all the documents, so I so appreciate that help. And then I did send out an email, and I currently jammed the copier in my last scan to get them all of the documents. There's lots and lots of documents. And Paula has also offered to meet with Steve Strauss to go over it if he has questions. But all of the supporting documents will be sent to them. And then for contracts, Paula's also been helping with that by putting them into an Excel doc, and when that is completed, we'll get that to everybody, so that you guys can take a look at the ongoing contracts. And then the final thing was that loan spreadsheet. Wanted to keep you posted. No changes. Both of these loan payments, those were on that LR spreadsheet. I will get both of the new trustees. I will email you that, just so you have the financial transparency to see what our loans are, what our payment schedules are. I may re-take LRS and revamp that because it makes sense to them and how they'll have like one loan in several different sheets, but I might try to simplify it a little bit, but I still think it's super helpful. And that was it.
All right. Anything else for Lucy? Okay. Moving on to new business, Discussion of Possible Action regarding the Arbor Day Proclamation. So I have the Arbor Day Proclamation around here, and I would like to start reading it, and then I'll pass it to other board members so they can continue. So if you could just give me a few. Arbor Day Proclamation, April 25th, 2025. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And?
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And...
Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And?
Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And?
Whereas Cambridge has, whereas trees in our cities increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And?
Whereas Cambridge has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 19 years, and has received the Tree City USA Growth Award, and Cambridge desires to continue its tree planting ways. And?
Now therefore, the Village of Cambridge celebrates Arbor Day on April 25th, 2025, and I, Chris Brunig, urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to spend time outdoors, plant and care for trees, and show gratitude to those professionals who dedicate their time to caring for our trees, dated this 22nd day of April, 2025.
Yay!
All right.
All right, Arbor Day.
Arbor Day. I will make a motion to approve the Arbor Day Proclamation.
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Arbor Day Proclamation. Yep, and that's a good segue right into our next possible action. I thought Jay was gonna be here tonight, but it doesn't look like he's in the audience. But our next agenda item, 8B, is Jay Weiss' proclamation. I believe Tricia...
Gorbey.
Gorbey is in the audience?
Yep.
She would like to speak on Jay's behalf. If you'd like, come on up and speak on Jay's behalf before we read the proclamation.
Do I sit here?
Yep.
Is that good? Okay. Thanks. Excited to, thanks for the invitation to join you. So I'm Tricia Gorbey. I'm, I actually am a member of the Urban Forestry Council, which is the Urban Forestry Council advises the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources on best ways to preserve, protect, and expand, and improve Wisconsin's urban and community forestry resources. I'm a voting member, and I represent higher education on the Urban Forestry Council. And I'm also the Director of the Natural Resources Institute with the Division of Extension. I also happen to be a resident of Cambridge, so I'm really happy to be with you and also have the opportunity to celebrate Jay. So this year marks the 30th anniversary of the awards program for the Urban Forestry Council, highlighting the longstanding commitment to recognizing excellence in urban forestry. We had, I'm a member of the awards committee, and we had 14 submissions for six awards, and they were announced, and Jay was awarded at the Urban Forestry Conference in February. Now Jay was awarded the Leadership Award, and the Leadership Award recognizes an individual or elected official at the county or local level who has made an outstanding contribution to urban forestry in Wisconsin. Jay was actually nominated for two different awards and received the Leadership Award. And looking at outstanding contributions overall, and also considered just to contribute, to go above and beyond of, in their communities. So Jay received this Leadership Award for his work in the Village of Cambridge. The seeds were planted, which would grow into the Cambridge Tree Project when he began holding an annual tree sale in 2006, and used the proceeds to donate trees to the village. The Cambridge Tree Project continues to expand and has resulted in one of the most diverse public tree canopies in Wisconsin. Jay continues to inspire others through his leadership on the Dane County Tree Board and by sharing his knowledge through presentations and guidance to others throughout the urban forestry community. So just a quote from the nomination package for Jay. Jay has the amazing ability to make things happen, to persist with his projects, to speak for the trees, to share information, and to inspire others to take action that stand out beyond his amazing feat of taking the majority Ash Maple community to the most diverse Wisconsin public tree canopy in just 10 years. So a huge accomplishment. I'm proud and honored to celebrate Jay, and thank you for taking the time today to celebrate his accomplishments.
Yeah, I think I would echo the persistent part.
It's a good thing.
So thank you.
Thank you for taking time. Appreciate it. All right. Without further ado, we will read the proclamation, recognizing Jay Weiss for his Leadership Award from Wisconsin's Urban Forestry Council. Whereas the Wisconsin Urban Forestry Council advises the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources on managing urban and community forest resources. And?
Whereas the Wisconsin Urban Forestry Council recently announced its annual awards honoring those dedicated to protecting, preserving, and increasing the number of trees that line the city streets, fill community parks, and beautify neighborhoods throughout the state. And?
Whereas at this ceremony, Jay Weiss was awarded the Leadership Award for his work with the Village of Cambridge. And?
Whereas in 2026, but I think that that's 2006, Jay Weiss formed the Cambridge Tree Project, which has held annual tree sales every year since, and the proceeds have established 1,150 additional living trees on public property. And?
Whereas all trees donated have been monitored annually through the Cambridge Tree Trials, a research-based initiative that tracks growth and survival rates, along with 60 additional variables to assess urban tree performance. And?
Whereas Jay Weiss' partnership with the Village of Cambridge has created the most diverse community forests in Wisconsin, with 190 species of trees now represented. And?
Now therefore, the Village of Cambridge Board of Trustees congratulate Jay Weiss on receiving the Wisconsin Urban Forestry Council's Leadership Award, and thank him for his ongoing dedication to the Cambridge Tree Project and the Cambridge Tree Trials, and sharing his passion with the residents of the Village of Cambridge, dated this 22nd day of April, 2025. Thank you, Jay.
Very good.
I did invite him. Something must've came up. But with that being said, anything else to add to? Oh, we gotta make a motion?
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation, recognizing Jay Weiss for his Leadership Award from Wisconsin's Urban Forestry Council.
I'll second.
All right. You got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Thank you again, Jay. All right. Moving on to 8C, rezone request to parcel 1110, what is it, 08120130527-1, Shell Coshagen. Anybody from Plan Commission here still? I know it's Chuck and Mark.
I'll kind of take it if they want to come up.
Come on up.
This was at Plan Commission last week, a public hearing. It was recommended for approval by the Plan Commission on a five-to-zero vote. There was some lengthy discussion. Number of concerns brought up from the public, which is in the minutes. Main thing being the entrances into subdivision. So there was extended conversation that we had met with DOT for another entrance onto 1218, and they're not allowing that at this time. The village is in the process of working with our engineers and DOT for the Lagoon Drive crossing, and that Drumland Trail is also an exit from that subdivision.
So it's ingress, egress issues.
Yeah. But that was, you know, there was some discussion then about the project. They did present a very complete project. The question before us that night was rezoning. Currently, it is rezoned, or zoned, mixed use, commercial, but in our smart growth plan, it does have it as residential high density. So this would meet our comprehensive plan and the future use for that. I can let them kind of take over with short overview of their plans, but...
All right, Lisa, thank you.
All right. Well, I'm Shell Coshagen, and the developer for the property, number you mentioned earlier.
Okay.
Katie Court in Kenseth Way.
You don't have it memorized.
And this is the engineer for...
I'm Neil Faff with Vera Becker.
And so I guess you guys got questions? You know, it's probably easier if you just...
So the rezoning isn't being rezoned to high density, it's being rezoned to a...
To a PUD. Thank you. I apologize for that. For a PUD with the intent of high density. So that setbacks and so forth can be different than what is in the residential zoning code.
Can you explain what a PUD is?
A PUD is a planned use development, which is an allowable zoning within our ordinances. It gives opportunity to vary a little bit from the zoning setbacks and so forth in our regular zoning codes. I did use as an example at Plan Commission, the whole Vineyard subdivision, when it was rezoned, was rezoned as a PUD. Partially, we didn't know for sure what was all going to be in there, if it was residential, commercial, industrial. You know, we weren't sure. So that was done as a planned use development, giving those opportunities. They had come before Plan Commission two months prior, and did go back with concerns that were raised, changed their plans. Originally, it had two entrances, one onto Kenseth Way, changed it, made a bigger turnaround in the middle, just one entrance onto Katie Court, so there wasn't more traffic going onto Kenseth. Changed the setbacks, changed the layout of the buildings to better address the concerns that were raised at Plan Commission.
I think we eliminated a building, too, I think.
Yeah, correct. So what we're proposing today for the planned use development is five buildings, not a land division currently, but it could potentially go into a land division for zoo or a lot line duplexes. So each building is two units, so 10 units total. The reason for a PUD is mainly for setbacks. The rear yard setbacks is 25 feet. We are closer than that, mainly with the decks outback. However, we're proposing screening throughout the property to, there's an apartment building to the north that we're sensitive about. They're within, they're encroached within the current setbacks. I don't know what the zoning or setbacks were at that time, however, that's closer than would currently allow for. So that doesn't help the situation. However, we're doing Arbor Vita's significant screening for those two units along the north side. That was one of the biggest concerns. We, like Lisa mentioned, this has been presented one time with no request from the Plan Commission, just regarding feedback. So we used that feedback, changed these plans, and then came back a second time.
To the Plan Commission?
To the Plan Commission to address the comments previously. We listened, changed the plan, discussed this with the Plan Commission with an action item, and then they unanimously recommended to the council.
And the largest change of the plan was the removal of one building?
So there's an entrance onto Kenseth. That was one of them. And then we also reduced the density by one building. However, the green space, et cetera, the density would meet high density or even a mixed use, because mixed use can be multiple items. So it's not necessarily a PUD for the density. It's actually more of a PUD for the setbacks. That's the larger aspect of it. However, when we're discussing setbacks, we need to make sure that traffic safety and fire protection is adequately addressed. Therefore, we have a common road that's not owned by the public. It'd be privately owned, not maintained by the public, but maintained either by the individual units or an association, et cetera, that meets the requirements for fire truck access. So if there is an emergency event at this property, this is presented to the fire department and EMS, et cetera.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Lisa, what was the resolution on the approving that plans of DOT for the Highway 134? Are they submitted? Are they being submitted?
They are submitted.
Okay, so they are.
The final plans have been submitted. MSA will be coming back to us once they receive the final approval from DOT with the upgraded costs estimates. We'll also get clarification from LRS on what is in the current bid to help pay for that, and then the board will be deciding if they're going out for bid. Now we're waiting once we get those updated figures. But it has been submitted, answering all of DOT's questions that they had.
So the actionable item tonight is to change, rezone it to a PUD?
To a PUD.
So I will request a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to change the zoning to a PUD.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns?
I was really happy to see the redesign with the entrance not on Kenseth Way and just off of Katie Court, because I think that's definitely gonna help. So I was really happy to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounded like you guys worked through the concerns from the Plan Commission, so...
Yep.
All right. Anything else? Well, thank you for coming in tonight. Appreciate it. Appreciate the visuals. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of rezone, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Your rezon is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is why we had to change our agenda, but I'm glad that Lisa sent it out and had us change it. So we have, sorry, I had it a little sticky here.
IPA Innovative Public Advisors.
We have Jess Wilds here from IPA, who will give us a brief overview of the Innovative Planning Grant.
Sure. Well, good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. I appreciate you changing the agenda and looking forward to introducing myself and our firm and sharing more information about the Innovation Grant, Innovation Planning Grant, and also the proposal that you have before you. So my name is Jess. I am a partner of Innovative Public Advisors. We're a municipal executive recruitment and strategy firm. We're a newer firm, but not new to municipal government. My business partner, Jay Shambow, has 32 years of experience as an administrator at the county, city, and village level. And I most recently was the Assistant City Administrator of the City of West Bend, where we worked together for several years. And we started this firm to help other communities with projects just like this. And we came to Lisa the other day, sort of happenstance. We were having lunch with Drake Daly from Lake Mills, and he, we were talking about this grant program, and he suggested maybe we talk with you because it might be a good fit. So the Innovation Grant, I'm not sure how familiar you are or not with it, but it's a state program that's been put together with $300 million. And 297 of it are put aside right now for what's called the, sort of the implementation portion of the grant, and 3 million were set aside just for municipalities under 5,000 in population to conduct studies, to find efficiencies where they might be able to share services, or consolidate, or work with a private entity, or a neighboring municipality. Really, it's pretty open-ended, but it really is a fully funded grant for a municipality to apply for. But it really is a fully funded grant for a municipality to apply for that would pay for the consulting expenses to conduct the study. So you can't use it to buy a truck, or you can't use it for other things. It's only for this purpose. And it's really fantastic, because it's, it's a study that you could use for a number of different reasons, but we're suggesting fire an EMS, because it sounds like that might be a need and might be an area to just explore. And that's what it is. It's just to explore it, to really understand sort of what your current needs are, what you think your future needs might be, to look at, you know, who's, who's in your, you know, service area. Is the county or the counties that you're within potential partners? Could they be more, less? So that's what we'll explore. And so that's what we're presenting to you tonight. It's really a proposal to put together and conduct the study. We would incorporate feedback and interaction with you and your constituents and all of your different fire EMS partners and organizations, because we understand, you know, there's a lot of different people and players that are involved, and we would want to have as much information and engagement as possible. So we've put together a proposal to do the study for you. And like I said, if you were to apply for the grant, which is due April 30th, which is why the sort of rush on changing your agenda tonight. We would help your team with the materials needed for the application itself. The proposal is pretty much the primary piece that's needed for the DOR. And, and you will know within a couple of weeks if, if you'll be receiving the grant. Fire EMS is a top priority for the Department of Revenue for this program. And it's been so far pretty successful in awards for that type of study. And right now, there's approximately 1.9 million of the 3 million funded. So I think your chances are really, really positive in achieving the funds and be able to conduct the study for, for your needs. So I'll pause there. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and, you know, please let me know.
So I'm looking at this, Jess, and it states that initial payment is, the Village of Cambridge will pay 50%.
Yep, upon, once you receive the grant. So if you don't receive the grant, then you don't need to do the study. Or if you still wanted to do the study, we can talk about something different. But essentially, if you, how the DOR is doing it, is they're awarding the entire grant upfront. So if you're awarded the grant funding, they'll deposit the $35,500, what we've presented here, in full right away. And so we would bill for the first half of the services upfront. And then we get through halfway through the project, we'd invoice halfway. And then once the project's delivered and you have your plan, then we'd bill for the remaining expenses. And we will have, besides myself and my partner, a fire chief as well, one of our advisors on our staff as part of this process, leading the way for, for it.
So what is, what is involved with the grant writing?
Sure. So the grant writing itself is, is pretty manageable. And we would provide you with all the files that are needed to actually submit the grant. It's, there's one form. It's the SL 400 form online through the DOR's website. And it really is a series of about five questions, the majority of it being a proposal from a consultant, because that's all that the grant funds. And so it's the proposal, and then it's hitting the, sort of the, the points that the grantor agency has made in terms of their goals are exploring cost savings and possible partnerships, transfer services, and shared services. So, so that's what we'll explore, as well as other things, you know, your, maybe your facility needs or your equipment, or, you know, are you, are you hitting the mark, however, you know, you really want to explore as also part of the study. But the form itself is really just a couple of things. So it's the, the title of the program, the description, the, the proposal, the cost amount, and then what the, the topic is. It's a pretty manageable application itself.
Sorry, is this a state grant?
It is.
Okay. Have you reached out to the other municipalities who are in our IGA to see if they'd be interested in doing one of these as well?
Haven't. So this would be inclusive of them. So you would be the applicant organization. And we would be working with those who would make sense to explore as maybe a partner or who we already have partnerships with as part of it. We haven't connected with everyone in your region necessarily who might be eligible for a study like this. Like I said, it was kind of happenstance that we learned that this would be a perfect fit for the program if, if that's what your need is. But we'd be happy to.
I mean, my, my, my only concern is the timeline, because it's four months and, and Oakland has to make a decision.
Well, I think that would be part of the, part of that whole, what the, what they bring to the table is options, you know.
Yep.
I think coming off fire and EMS commission, any, any kind of options that we would have out there would be beneficial.
But do we have enough time to do that, for them to make a decision, because they have to make a decision by July 1st?
I think that would be a conversation.
Yeah. I think it can only help in that conversation, saying that we have, you know, we have this consultant, we, we have this grant that they're, they're doing a study right now and, and might facilitate, bring them to the table.
And I think, too, in looking at kind of what their timeline is, you know, they have weeks two to five their discovery meetings, stakeholder interviews. So those types of things would fall into that timeline.
I think my concern is what you alluded to earlier, which is the grant writing aspect. And is that going to overtask our staff?
She said they, she said the consultant's writing.
It's, it's, yeah, it's pretty much done.
It needs to come from the municipality, though, right?
Yep.
And, correct me if I misstate anything. I know this was talked about a couple of times in our discussions with fire and EMS. One community in a, say like our commission, only one can apply for the grant. Two can't apply and be getting the grant.
The same program.
Usually it's the largest and.
Who's paying the most?
Yeah.
Right now, that's us.
Yeah. So.
Yep. And they would all have, you know, a part in the interviews and the.
Well, that's the other part I'm concerned about, is that this is interviewing a lot of people, right? So you do your discovery work, and then you go interview the other people at communities, right?
Well, since you're the applicant, we would work with you to determine who, who is a part of the interview process.
Might be who is willing to share info, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, it's, that's what, you know, and it's going to require their time, right? So we're committing kind of interviewing time for them. I just want to kind of level set that.
Yeah. I would envision it as possibly an invite to a commission meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and, and then introduction, kind of, something, something along those lines.
If there's any help needed on writing that grant, just let me know. I've written about 100 of them over the years, so. And if it's only six questions, that's really good.
So it's not a typical grant application with summary, narrative questions. It's more of just a form with a couple of attachments.
And there isn't a good reason to say, we're applying as lead agency, but the other four? They've worked on a lot of them, and they love when you, you know, bring other communities in and say, we're not all applying, we're doing it as one. Does that work at all, or not really?
It won't, that won't probably impact it, because the, as part of the proposal, it kind of describes that we'll be exploring the different municipalities and partners. So they would be a part of it already without being an applicant, but, yes.
It looks to me, from the statute, like you'd have to be a county or a municipality to apply.
Yep.
Yeah. As opposed to a commission.
Correct. Or like a, a special organization or something like that.
One follow-up question. If we receive this portion of the grant, are we then eligible to apply for a grant to carry out?
Yep, the implementation portion?
Yes.
Yes. So that's a great question. So the remaining, you know, we talked about 3 million set aside just for these studies for smaller municipalities. The remaining $297 million set aside for actually implementing findings of these types of plans. Now, that money is also available to larger communities like the Milwaukies and Maddisons. But you would likely have a much better shot at receiving implementation funds, because you received this grant, and you would have the study in hand, and you could prove if it meets the criteria to get that funding. Definitely.
That would help a lot.
Yep.
That's amazing.
And again, it, it is at no reimbursement cost. There's no match on your side to the grant. There's no requirement for you to provide any funding outside of the award that the grant would fully cover.
And the award for implementation, if I recall from, it's a tiered where.
It's a little more complicated.
A number of years.
Yep.
And it gradually decreases over the years.
Yep.
Is it more focused towards personnel, or is it, is it the whole gamut?
I think it's the whole gamut, if I recall. It's pretty broad.
It's broad. It's a bit more complicated than what the, the study portion is, though. So we would work with you on kind of what that looks and what's eligible and not, and rate the savings there.
Is it a pretty clean reporting mechanism back when the grant's completed and done, so that we don't have to have our staff do a whole bunch of reporting on it?
Yeah, that's a great question. It doesn't appear that there's much reporting requirements at all. Is that you promise to do? And like, we would be promising to provide you with a wonderful study. And, and we're essentially, that's it. If, if they maybe ask for the study, there's no other reporting requirements that we've learned of to date.
That's great.
Yeah, it's lovely.
All right. So I think the action on the table here is to approve the Innovative Planning Grant?
Application.
The application.
I will make a motion to approve the village completing the Innovation Planning Grant. Application.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Through.
Completing and submitting.
Yeah, through IPA.
What you said.
Oh. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns?
It is a great idea. Thank you for bringing this.
Thank you for bringing it.
Thanks for coming in, Jess. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for stuffing in.
Yeah. I look forward to working with you if you get the award. Thank you.
And we'll know by the end of April, you said?
So the deadline is April 30th. We'll probably learn a couple of weeks after that within.
Okay. So it's sometime in May?
Yes, early May.
All right, thank you. And you have enough time to do it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Since it is grant, Lisa, it's my first question. Is it, is it a roll call?
It isn't money, so.
Yeah, we just submitted a grant.
So all those in favor, we got a, a motion and a second. All those in favor of the Innovative Planning Grant moving forward with it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The motion passes?
Yes.
All right. Now, the next part, the new business 8E, the exciting part of our meeting tonight is the 2025-26 Village Board Committee Assignments.
I'll make a motion to approve the village, the 2025-26 Village Board Committee Assignments as laid out in the packet.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and now we discuss. And usually how this plays out, Paula, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you have a little bit more seniority than me on the board, but this is where we kind of barter a little bit, you know. We're like, okay, I don't want to be on, I don't want to be on water and sewer. I would rather be on economic development. This is where we have that, that lively discussion.
Yeah.
I tried to, I tried to work with most folks and their schedules. Water and Sewer, you will not be on Water and Sewer. I'm going to take your place for that until we get a new member on board. So we did, Sharon, we did take you off of that, so just note. But this is where we have that, that discussion.
And then once that new person joins us, then we.
Then we'll have another.
Distribute a little bit as well, too. Okay.
And I don't know if Sharon or Jennifer, if you guys have any questions about which ones you were assigned to, because not all of them meet regularly. Some of them meet once a year. You know, some of them are just really ad hoc and, and, you know, don't reach out at all.
Right. They're, they're based on a request, like Personnel Committee, it can meet as much or as little as, as the staff requests. Or as need be.
Our standing committee is Plan Commission meets once a month, the second Monday of the month. Water and Sewer meets once a month, the third Tuesday of the month. Joint Law Enforcement meets once every two months before our board meeting on the second Tuesday. The rest are all as needed. Ones like Licensing meet. They'll be meeting coming up as license renewals are taking place right now. After that, they may not meet again until next year. Cable Committee meets usually once, once a year. Board of Review meets once a year for two hours.
But it's, it's mandated?
It's mandated. Yeah. So like they said, a lot of them don't meet that often. TIP Review Board meets once a year, unless the new TIP is created, then they'll meet more often. Some don't meet at all, but are in our ordinances or statutes and have to be.
Is this, is there a summary of any of this anywhere for our new board members?
Great question.
Not, not, not fully un-green board members.
I can do one. Yeah.
I know, Sharon, you asked some questions about certain things when you were filling out your form, and we did discuss it, but it was kind of a quick overview of who's who in the zoo, kind of. So we have.
That's a great.
Well, I don't mind being on anything, just don't know what I'm doing.
Except for Water and Sewer.
Well, I don't like water.
I got you.
And Lisa, I'm not, it doesn't have to be like a big thing. It's just like, you know, how often it has met, or how, you know, a couple of things like that. Last met on, you know, whatever.
People are scheduling their lives kind of around these meetings.
Economic Development is meeting once a month by choice of the committee.
Correct.
But some of these are set by others, you know what I mean? And some are set by the committee. So it'd be good to know.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? I got to put my shameless plug out there for the vacancies that are out there. And I know we have a lot of people in the audience right now that are from Cambridge, but there are some vacancies. Zoning Board of Appeals, there's some alternates that are vacant. We have some other, other ones out there. So if you are interested, please talk to Lisa. Lisa or Lucy in the office, and, and take a look through the, the agenda here, and you can see where all the vacancies are. And if you'd like to put your feet in the water here with, with the village. I know when I started on the Village Board, I think, I don't know, it was like nine years ago, I started on licensing.
Yep, everybody starts on licensing.
Everybody starts on licensing, so do I.
That's where I started.
It was very, you know, it was.
My first time on the board.
It was where I learned, you know, how to, how to run it. But they didn't really meet that often. But it was a good way to get your feet wet and kind of see if you were truly interested in, you know, entertaining a civic duty for the village, so. But if you can do that and maybe distribute that out, Lisa, that'd be very helpful. All right. Without further ado, then, I would entertain a motion. We, we do have a motion, we do have a second.
And a second.
All those in favor of the.
Oh, sorry, I had one other question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Has Larry gotten back to, about whether or not he wants to maintain his term?
Not as a guest. As of now, we'll keep him on until we hear otherwise.
Okay. All right, super. Thank you.
Jennifer, Sharon, any questions, concerns? This is where we discuss.
No, I, yeah. I asked Lisa a lot of questions when I talked to her.
Sharon?
I wouldn't know what question to ask.
I know I put you on chair for a committee, and you might have had some concerns about that.
I'm sorry, say, oh, yeah, the cable.
Right. But cable meets.
Maybe once a year.
Maybe once a year.
And staff will be there.
Staff will be there to kind of guide you along and work things out, so.
And Gary's there, right?
Yeah.
You know, Gary's about.
And Melissa will be there.
He's, he's on that one, so, yeah.
All right. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the approving the 2025-26 Village Board Committee Assignments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. We now have committee assignments.
I'll be totally lost at these meetings.
All right.
We're all here to help.
Yeah. You're not out on island. Definitely not.
Yep.
No, they're hearing in.
First few meetings, Lisa and staff are great.
With that, we move to 8F, vacancy of Village Board. So now that I'm in this position, which is basically just a glorified trustee position, and the glory comes in the fact that I get to sign checks after the meeting is done. So now that I'm in this position, which is basically just a glorified trustee position, and the glory comes in the fact that I get to sign checks after the meeting is done. It's, I had to resign my trustee position. So that means that there is an open position out there for the board. And I know we have a couple or one already interested party, but we have to approve my resigning from the board, so. With that said, I.
Require a motion or?
Yes, for my resignation.
I will make a motion to approve Chris Brunig's resignation as village trustee.
All right, could I get a second, please?
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns? Anybody want me back on as trustee?
Nope.
Nope.
I like you right where you are.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
And then I'd also be looking for direction from the board. I didn't want to take it upon myself. Typically, what we've done in the past is put out that we have a vacancy, ask people for resumes, letters of interest, have a date to get it back to us. The board then does interviews. In a situation like this, right after an election, we could say, let's look at the write-ins. But we had, after the two write-ins that were appointed, probably 25 people that all had one or two votes. You know, written in for one or two. There wasn't one that stood out where somebody else had 25, you know, names. So that would be an option for the board, but there wasn't another standout. It was a lot of scattering one or two votes. So before I put an ad out or we put it on the website, I did want direction from the board that that is how we want to proceed and.
I think we do it the way we've done it the last few times.
I think so.
We've had some.
We've had great applicants.
Yep, we've had great applicants and great people filling in, doing it that way. And it gives village people who are interested the opportunity.
And what type of timeline? If I give it to the paper now, it would be published next Thursday. We can put it on the website this week. Yeah, so do we want to have a deadline by the next meeting or by the second meeting in May? You know, what timeline?
I'd like to have it for the next meeting.
I'd like to have it for the next meeting too and have the position open as.
Where we're actually doing it.
People that they were thinking of would probably already be putting it in.
Yep.
No.
Lisa, what's the term for that spot?
It would be filling one year.
One year.
The remainder of Chris's term. So it would be filling for one year. So if we're looking to have it on the May 13th agenda, if we have responses back to us by May 8th, um, May 9th, that gives us time.
Yep.
Okay.
And that was just for some direction? You don't need any actionable item up here in the form of motions?
No. Not my decision to make, it's yours.
Yep, appreciate it. Okay. All right, moving on to eight G, signatories on bank accounts. Lisa or?
I can just do it. I'll just make the motion. I make a motion to add Chris Brunig as a signatory on our bank account.
We do need a list of all of us that, didn't they say they need all of our names in the motion? So.
Yes.
For Lucy, myself, Chris, and Samantha on the library account.
All right, so I will make a motion to have Chris, Lucy, and Lisa as signatories on.
And Samantha.
Hold on. On all of our bank accounts? And then have Samantha on the library bank account.
I'll second. For Brian.
Brian, I'm sorry.
And to remove Mark McNally.
Oh, yes, and remove Mark McNally. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we are.
Brian was the second. All right, any questions or concerns? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I am, motion passes. Oh, look at this one. Eight H, welcome to Cambridge signs. Lisa said she would take this one.
We can give an update. I know at the last meeting, there was discussion about the new site and that he wanted an easement or wanted to be able to remove it whenever he wanted. Since then, our staff has talked to him a couple of times. He has said he would remove that request. So we'd be looking for the board to decide, yes, we want it on that location. That's right across from the bowling alley rather than on the golf course property, which is a little further from the village. And to then direct Jane to help us draft a permanent easement for that sign.
So where, where is this?
So it's the vacant lot across from the bowling alley.
Okay. Yeah, I, I know that the house is way back and is there that big green space that's there.
And so where they're looking to put it there, and the DOT has come marked for us where the subx are, being that it's out of village property or out of village limits, it has to be on private property. So they came and marked the right of way for us. It would be very close to the tree line along the house. So you have the big green space, the tree line, and then the house.
Yep.
It would be right in front of the tree line.
Okay. So is it a two-faced sign? Would we be able to see both sides? It's only one-sided?
One side.
And it would be on the same side of the road as people coming into town?
Into town.
Versus where we were looking at doing it before, it would have been on the opposite side of the road? Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
If, and then I guess in that, that write-up, Jane, if there's going to be any sale of the land and then we, we need to have something in writing that states that, you know, they can't just remove this sign or.
Runs with the land.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I think we have that in our existing one. I was also going to ask if we should follow the same pattern on the landscaping the last time. We had wanted to kind of take control of the landscaping, as I recall, around it. I don't know if the.
I know he had said he would mow around it.
Okay. Maybe we don't want to be planting things anymore than that. So I can just be silent on that and let him continue mowing right up to the sign.
Yep, I think that would be fine for that particular property, I think.
I think so.
You could maybe put in that there's an expectation that there's like no plantings around it that would block the view of the sign, something like that.
Sure.
I just don't want any surprises down the road for future board members.
And that's why we were pushing, you know, we need to know that if they don't sell the, if they sell the land or if it gets passed to the children and the children say, we don't want it there, you know.
They can't take it down.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so for that one, we were, we will need approval.
A motion to place it on.
The original property or the secondary property.
Secondary site and draft a easement.
Glad he changed his mind.
It is a better site.
I know.
So.
And he was spoken with this morning and confirmed all of, all of that, that he has no special conditions whatsoever.
Why the change of mind?
Maybe just a better understanding of what it is that the village needed.
Yeah.
And he had called me the very next day after our last meeting. He called the next day and spoke with me and had a change of heart on that.
Oh, okay.
So.
So Lucy sweet talked him.
So, good.
I will make a motion to place the west, welcome to Cambridge sign in the secondary location.
East.
What?
Isn't it the east?
Sorry, east, yes, the east, thank you, the east sign in the secondary location. And have our attorney work to create an appropriate easement for that use with the property owner.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns? All right, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
All right.
Get those signs up yet?
Yay.
And the last thing now on our new business is international truck and snowplow invoice. And I will hand that off to Lisa or if we have a public works rep.
Or Lucy or whoever knows what it's about.
So back, pulled up the minutes from. We approved purchasing this snowplow back in 2023. The body is now ready. At a cost of $119,472.90. We did receive an invoice for that. The quote had been, I want to say roughly 210, or 210,000. So now it goes to a different to get the bed and the plow and everything put on.
Which is already, it's already there, it's in Madison. At the secondary location where they're going to put the plow and stuff on.
So, you know, the motion back when it was approved was that we will go ahead and order it. We will figure, you know, determine financing at a later date. We do have the invoice now. So the question is, how do we, you know, do we pay for it now? When we go out for a loan later in the year, add it to it? Do we do a shorter term loan now to pay this right away? But we have an invoice for $119,000. And we weren't going to just cut a check for it.
And we're expecting approximately an additional $100,000 once the rest of the parts are added to the chassis.
Can you break down the split between water, sewer, and village, or is there any?
Back when it was approved, the village had anticipated water and sewer paying. I don't know if there was a specific breakdown.
And what, wait, what, what is this, what is this piece of equipment?
The snowplow.
Snowplow, but also a truck. It will be used for nine months out of the year as a truck.
Yeah, you could take the plow off.
Take the plow off and use it as one of our trucks. It'll have a bed and. At the time, water and sewer did not make a motion to approve paying for part of it. They wanted additional quotes. There's not a whole lot of manufacturers that make them. I don't know, I believe at the time, Public Works looked at different options, but this was the only quote we got. And this is what the village board approved.
Are all, are all of our vehicles 50/70? Public Works vehicles 50/70? I'm sorry, 30/70?
I'd have to double check. I know a lot are, a lot of the equipment that we know will be used both are paid for by both.
What would, sorry, what would water and sewer, what would water and sewer and stormwater need to use this truck for?
I could put on my old Public Works hat and say, we could use it to haul that scoping apparatus that we have. We can use it if we need to, if there's a water main break and we need to utilize another truck. It's kind of all hands on deck when, when you have an issue like that. But I think at the time, water and sewer, I was on water and sewer and it was, Steve was debating, you know, is this going to be primarily just a plow? But we use, we use it for, you know, a lot of our, you know, trucks that have, we put plows on for, you know, like.
Brush pickup.
Brush pickup and, you know, everything else. They're, they're multi-faceted. I would think 20, 30% would be fair, but that argument could be made that a plow is, a plow truck is a plow truck. But it's not going to just be sitting in there collecting dust and sometime they're going to utilize it.
Yeah, and, and I think we'll have to, I mean, we're going to have to figure out what that breakdown is. Given what, given what you, the two examples you gave me, I'm thinking, well, that's way more like a 10 or a 20% usage for water and sewer. But, I mean, so we can talk that. So really what we need to determine tonight is how we're funding it. So do we want to go for a short-term loan? Or do we want to, do we want to put it in with the loan we know we're going to have to take for fire and EMS services?
What would our rates be? I would think short-term loan. What was the original discussion on it? How were we going to finance it originally?
The motion was to approve ordering it and financing would be determined at a later date.
Here it is, the later date. The later date.
Can we do that with some of our bills, push into a later date?
I was going to say, do I get?
All right. Are there any other new equipment things coming in this year? That were pushed to a later date?
Like I said, we know we'll have another $100,000, $90,000 on this once. You know, so it could be for the whole thing at once.
I think it would make sense to do the whole thing at once instead of.
Well, how, when are we going to need to do the next one? I mean, is it a?
Do we know when to take?
No. They were waiting for parts, so they said it could be a bit, could be.
Three to six months, I'm guessing, right before winter.
Yep, because this gentleman from Lakeside, it's, I believe it's Lakeside. He stated technically from his point of view, it's been delivered because it's delivered to the company in Madison from their point of view. And so now he can't control, he's, he does, he's not going to allow like a holding in us to delay until everything's done, right? Because he's delivered his portion of it.
What are the terms, what are the terms of payment for, I mean, we had to have signed some papers that had terms of payment for these people. What, what are those?
I did include the proposal in the packet. Oh, or did I? Yeah, the, did I include the original or just the bill?
You have the contract. The contract is with Lakeside, correct? Are they the final contract? That's who the, who are we making the second payment out to if that's not them?
That is going to be, and I cannot remember the name, I just know they're out of Madison.
I'm trying to see, we do have the, um, the price at the time was 209,591 and 36 cents. The motion was for 210,000.
It says right here, you are obligated to pay, if, it's a little fuzzy. This is a cash transaction, you are obligated to pay the balance on delivery. And if they consider delivery to that other place, then we owe this bill now.
Yeah.
I think it's, I have to pay our bill, so.
Do we have any, like, confirmed cost of what the second part?
like confirmed cost of what the second part, you know, the second half of the bill will be?
The quote was for two hundred nine.
Two hundred and ten. That's what was approved.
Was what was approved.
If we were to take out a loan, I would think we'd take a loan for two hundred and ten.
Yeah.
Because that's what the contracted price was. If they're going to, because didn't we sign that as a contracted price or was that an estimate?
It does, the proposal quote is valid if the chassis is produced by twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four. Price does not guarantee cost of freight or surcharges. Chassis built after twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four will receive new pricing once build date has been determined, well, it has been built. Future cost of freight surcharges for twenty twenty-five are unknown currently. We would be notified of any new increases as soon as they'd have them. Price quoted is current price offered by the manufacturer. Be aware of final price at delivery could change due to additional cost by manufacturer.
I, I mean, we need to pay the bill. We're going to have to take out a loan for it. I don't think we have enough information because I don't want to take out a loan for just the chassis. And then I'd take out another loan for the rest of the building. So, by the next meeting, can you figure out what the full amount of this vehicle is going to be so we can make sure we're getting a proper loan? And can we just then table this till the next meeting? Or postpone it?
Well, we know that we, we already approved it for two ten. So, let's
That document says it could change.
I understand that, but they're waiting on payment for a hundred and nineteen K right now.
Yes.
And are we going to be incurring any late fees or anything else as they, are they not working on our vehicle right now because they haven't received payment?
Nope.
It's a different, is that a totally different place now?
Because we signed the contract upon delivery.
For eight.
I'm sorry?
This invoice was dated April eighth.
Okay. I almost think we should at least
It would be thirty days on five eighth, so we would have a
Meeting in between?
Would we?
No.
No, we would not, so.
So, another option, do we contact local banks, get prices, say for two hundred ten? If it ends up being more as we go out for a loan later, could tack on any additional at that point. But to do it in a more timely manner and let them know at our next meeting, we'd be looking to approve.
Well, I think then the actionable item is to give our staff some direction to talk to the local banks, see what we can get. Correct? For interest rates or, you know, what we can get for a loan for that two hundred and ten?
What would be the length you'd be looking for? I mean
As long as we can. However long we can play, stretch out those payments would be advantageous for the Village of Cambridge.
Of course, the longer, more interest.
Without a penalty to pay off early. So if we find we have extra money, we can pay it off early.
All right.
I mean, you know, look into like an option, you know, like a five-year, because it's a vehicle. So look at like a five-year and then if there's something that would be longer than five years. Because I don't think there's any way we'd be able to pay it off in less than five years. Do you guys? With our current situation?
Knowing what we know now.
I mean, and if we have extra money, we can always pay it off early. Just make sure there's no penalties for early payoff and then that takes care of that.
What would be the longest term of a loan that we would find acceptable?
Thirty years.
This snowplow, I don't know if it'll be around that long.
Ten? Ten, what's the lifetime of this snowplow, ten?
Longer than we have. We use them for
Thirty years.
Yeah, we use them for
Thirty years.
Is there any, any money that we could get from the plow that we have currently that's going to replace?
I did talk to Cody about that when I got the invoice and they did say, yes, they're going to be selling the current plow, or one of them. And he said it specifically what brand it is.
Okay.
Do you know, Lisa?
But there could be some money
Those dollars would go directly towards
Yes.
So we could take those dollars and pay it directly towards paying down the principal of that loan. So then that can help to reduce how much interest we'd be paying on it as well once we, once we got that, so.
Absolutely, and I'm not positive. And in all of the old minutes and even in the stuff from Lakeside, they never stated who was doing the plow and the additional parts. But I think that it's a, I, I, because I did talk to the gentleman, I do think it's Madison Truck Equipment. But I'm going to call, I can call that gentleman back from Lakeside tomorrow too and just confirm that. And then give Madison Truck a call and try to gather some information on a timeline and, and confirm the cost.
That'd be good.
And if there's any weight on parts, if, if it's going to be more lengthy.
That'd be great.
Because we can't sell our, ours until we know that we have this one fully operating and ready to go.
But according to Cody, there's some, some buyers out there that are interested in it?
That I was, I was not told.
Oh, okay, all right.
Just that they would sell it.
Can't put it out there, so.
All right. So that one, the actionable item is staff direction, correct?
Yeah, staff direction to look into a loan and staff direction to find out where our chassis was delivered to. And what additional costs are going to be.
Yeah, because it says it was, the whole thing was delivered to Village of Cambridge, we know he signed for it. It wasn't delivered here, it was delivered somewhere else, somebody was supposed to do something. It might give you some leeway on that receipt of that.
Right, right.
Thirty days?
Yeah, that thirty days. Even though there's nothing here that says it's
Oh, no, it is, if you look far enough and get off the fuzzy scan, whoever signed this was, this is a cash transaction. You're obligated to pay the balance due on delivery. Well, then that's that delivery where to get I agree. And then there's a thing about you're going to get rescinded like five percent of the value, so that's not good.
All right, Lisa, any questions from us? Lucy?
No, no, I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow and let you all know.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to correspondence, Dane County Sheriff contract, filling of a vacancy.
So, we did receive notification and my packet's all messed up now.
I think it's one of the last things.
Yeah, it's the last thing in your packet.
When is it going to start?
I do not have notification yet of when he will be starting. He is road trained, so it will be sooner than
It'll be a shorter training period than, than some of the other candidates. But we had a lot of really good candidates that were interviewed and
Were you part of the interview?
I was.
Okay.
I'm excited. Me and Kristen.
Yeah, so he's been on the force twelve, fifteen years.
Yep. He doesn't look like that. I don't look like that at all. The picture in his packet is not what he looks like.
A little, no, this was his, his photo from when he was hired.
I got you.
So he's a little bit more hardened. You will. Very nice guy, though.
Yep.
He's been on twelve, fifteen years. Has been a member of SWAT, recently served on a drug unit.
I didn't know if we want to read this so that the folks in the audience know it or
So any actionable items on this or is it just
Correspondence to let you know it's moving forward.
Any input from our existing officers? Chad and
Chad has worked with him on SWAT.
Yep, he's, he said he's, he's the candidate.
Okay.
So. He said that would be who his recommendation would.
All right, well, that's good news, especially before the summer kicks off with all the events and everything we have going on, so. All right, moving on to ten, which is public comment number two. Any public comments? All right, we got one, come on up, sir. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, everyone, Joe Scholz, live at three four one Waverly Drive, here in Cambridge. Chris, first of all, I'd like to thank you for adding this second public comment section in. I think this is a great addition. Several meetings that I've been at where stuff comes up during the meeting, like you said, that I would like to make a comment on. And having to wait an entire another month to make that comment doesn't help anything because the discussion's already had about it, so I think this is a great addition. Again, I've, I've spoken a couple of times about my frustration with the way finances have been handled. And sitting during the meeting tonight, it's still there, especially listening about how this new truck purchase is being handled. Sounds like we, this has been discussed in the past. Quarter million dollar vehicle that needs to be funded. When it was approved, where the funding was coming from obviously wasn't discussed. We'd figure that out later on down the road. Here we are down the road. Last year, we had to take out a two or three hundred thousand dollar loan to cover what we were short on for a budget last year. Sounds like we might be taking out another loan for this next year because we're already short on budget. Something needs to change with the way that finances are being handled in this board. And I really hope that with the new board members, the restructuring, that's something that can really be a priority going forward. Because our tax dollars keep going up, our water bills keep going up. Everything's getting more expensive around here and kicking the can down the road isn't the solution. Taking a loan out to pay for a quarter million dollar vehicle is just making that quarter million dollar vehicle turn into a two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar vehicle by the time you pay for interest. We need to figure out a way that we can fund these projects ahead of time so they're not scrambling last minute to do it with a loan and then ending up paying more for the project in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Sarah Scholz, also three forty-one Waverly Drive. I just wanted to make sure that the full board knew that I put in my, my application to apply to be a trustee. Did everyone receive that?
I did not share it with the board yet until we knew what direction the board was going to fill the
Okay. Okay, I was just under the impression from you, Chris, that I was going to be interviewed tonight. You had mentioned that in an email, so so I'm just going to read the letter that I wrote so that you know of my interest. I, I'm very, like my husband said, I'm very concerned about the finances of this village and that's my number one priority. So I'll just read this quick letter that I wrote. My family and I have been Cambridge residents for eleven years and plan to stay here for years to come. I've always been intrigued by local government as I grew up in a politically involved family. The recent dynamics within the village, primarily the financial struggles, have led me to seek a seat on this board. Although I have a lot to learn, my determined and creative mind will be an asset to the Village of Cambridge. My greatest priority, as I said, is balancing the budget. We can't keep kicking the can down the road or I'm afraid the village is going to be run into the ground, to be honest. I have friends that are looking to move elsewhere because of the taxes and how things keep going up. It's just, it's not going to keep working. My current job as a billing specialist at a medical facility requires one hundred percent accuracy. If the financials would be incorrect, we would lose our patient trust and the business could not stay afloat. Before I leave each day, I have to make sure the day's numbers balance and I don't leave until they do. Prior to this job, I was a stay-at-home mom for over ten years. We sometimes had to be very creative in our budgeting because of that. During those ten years, my husband and I financed the thirty thousand dollar adoption of our son. At times, I thought we were going to go broke, but instead we made fiscally wise, though often challenging decisions throughout the process. We never had to take out a loan and I'm really proud of that. It took a lot of hard decisions. To this day, my husband and I have zero debt aside from our home. We are set to pay off our mortgage ahead of its maturity date due to responsible financial decisions. And I think these experiences can really help the village. Additionally, I paid for my portion of college tuition. My parents required me to pay for half. And I worked through each summer and over Christmas breaks in order to pay for every upcoming semester. Again, at the age of eighteen to twenty-two, this required really hard work and wise decisions to stay debt-free. I believe these experiences and a fresh set of eyes will be helpful to the board. I'm willing to put in the time and effort as I only work part-time in order to keep the village on, or get the village back on track. If we continue down the road of overspending, I really think residents will move. We need to take a serious, hard look at the numbers in order to regain the trust of our community and preserve the great Village of Cambridge. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Come on up, sir.
I'm Doug, tough D, Cambridge, three fourteen, Ori Lane. Just to follow up a little bit what Jill said and I, I, I thought I understood it correctly. We didn't get any bids on this piece of equipment?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't recall, I don't know if you guys recall.
I thought Cody got a couple bids.
Cody won a bid. Todd?
Todd.
Or he maybe talked to others and they couldn't guarantee.
We needed it by a certain time because the other, the other plows
And knowing it would be a two, two to three year to receive it.
The reason I asked that, I was at a board meeting back in November, I recall. And we ran into a pinch in timeline because of trash and recycling pickup. So we stayed with the same vendor and never accepted any outside bids. So we locked ourselves up and had a five-year plan for five percent increase each year. There's other competitions, a great thing, we may have gotten that a little cheaper. And now with this new piece of equipment with no other options. So I was just curious about that, that's why we didn't get another bidding. Thank you. I also like to second attempt, public, when you do your discussion, that's kind of nice to see, so I hope you continue this.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, any other public comment? Going once, twice, all right. Moving on to questions, referrals to staff or future agenda items?
Can I just make a, so, so the reason the first public comment is on is because some of you may want to comment on things we're deciding on that day. And then the second public comment is, was good use for like, like what you saw today. But I want to make sure, the reason why we wanted to keep the one at the beginning is because if we're making a decision on something, we should hear from our constituents on, on what we would, you know, what they think about the things we're deciding on. So I think that's why after some conversations, that was probably having two of them would be the, the best option versus one or the other. Thank you.
All right, any questions, referrals to staff?
I had something, but I forgot. Yeah, I had something, but I forgot. So when I remember what it is, Lisa, I'll call you and let you know.
Future agenda item, I was wondering if we could get, I mean, obviously we know we have commission meetings and things like that. But I would like to see the EMS director and the fire chief come in and give us quarterly updates. Well, you know, obviously some of that information will trickle down through us. But I think hearing it right from them would be great.
That'd be great.
That's right, you're our new commission member, I have a gift for you. It's a bill from Fort Atkinson.
Thanks.
So, but Lisa, if we could have Chief Evans and whoever the interim is right now come in and kind of give us a status report.
Mr. Williams?
Anything else for staff? Okay, upcoming meetings.
I will add, once we get our last seat filled, we will work on doing one of our one-on-ones for the board.
Yes.
Especially for newer people, some of you, even though you've been on the board, you haven't sat through one of those yet. So, and I'll get out as soon as, if I see things from the league, they do a new member.
Yeah, it's helpful, very helpful.
And I did give you copies of one of their older, oh, I have to pack it for you. But we tried to kind of touch on things that we're dealing with here and so we'll work on that.
All right.
So, I remembered what my thing is. And I'm not sure if I'm really referring this to staff or I think that because I still am on Audit and Finance Committee, one of the, our biggest Committee, uh, one of the, our biggest expenditures is payroll. So I think it's time that we do a review of our employee handbook and all of the rules that we have in place for employees, and do we need to make a motion for the Personnel Committee to address that? If so, I would like that on the next meeting agenda.
Should we review of employee handbook to Personnel Committee?
Review and revise, yeah.
And speaking of Personnel Committee, then if we can meet in a timely manner, I also wanted to go over the insurance through the state of the, of Wisconsin, so we can put that.
Oh, the state plan.
Yeah.
You've got information, good.
I got everything up until, to the point where I'm waiting on a Personnel Committee.
Meeting, yep.
Meeting.
So that'd be great.
Kristen, it sounds like we need to get a Personnel meeting going.
Yep, we gotta get a Personnel meeting going, so...
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Paula, and thank you, Lucy.
You're welcome.
I forgot about it.
Jennifer as well. Sorry, I had to go pull the list up quick.
I know, yep.
All right. Upcoming meetings, uh, number twelve, May twelfth, Plan Commission; May thirteenth, Joint Law Enforcement; May thirteenth, Village Board; May fourteenth, Library Board; May twentieth, Economic Development; May twentieth, Water and Sewer; May twenty-seventh, Village Board, and it sounds like we're gonna have a Personnel Committee meeting, um...
TBD.
TBD.
Soon.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, um, are you ready to go the next thing?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to convene a closed sessions per nineteen eighty-five, one echo, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and this has to do with purchase of public property.
Uh, is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trendle.
Josh.
Cracklow.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes. All right, we'll take five minutes.